All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 10th, 2018 Westminster City Council meeting. At this time, I would ask you all to rise and join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their beloved citizens, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Parker, would you take the roll, please?
Atchison.
Here.
Byrd.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the minutes of the November 26th meeting. Do we have a motion by someone from the council? Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes from the November 26th, 2018 meeting as presented.
Would you have a second? Demott?
Second.
You have a motion. The second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Moving on to item four, we have no presentations tonight. And then moving on to item five, Ms. Warner, where are you at? Nope. You want to bring your illustrious group down? And council, would you join us, please, at the front?
My name is Kelly Earhart, and I'm here from the Westminster Legacy Foundation. I'm the recent, the current vice chair. We have a presentation for you tonight. We're very excited and proud of this. Yeah. Since Westminster Legacy Foundation's creation in 2001, we have donated hundreds of thousands of dollars back to the Westminster community. We have supported capital projects like the Armed Forces Tribute Garden, Jessica Ridgeway Memorial Park, and we have also helped close the funding gaps with other nonprofits working in Westminster that would not otherwise be met. When the Westminster Legacy Foundation board learned about the innovative nature playground being built at the Westminster Station, we decided to take action and pledged to raise $200,000 to support the project. According to a study by the Department of Health and Human Services, the average American kid spends more than seven hours in front of a screen every day. That nature playground will be constructed of boulders to climb and explore, treehouses, chirping birds, and blue skies, and will give kids a chance to experience nature in a safe environment where no such resources exist. Providing children with access to nature is proven to develop gross motor function, fine motor skills, imagination, and social skills all at the same time. Tonight, I am pleased to present you with this check for $200,000 in support of the nature playground at Westminster Station. By giving this check, the Westminster Legacy Foundation has now donated more than $1 million back to the Westminster community. Thank you all for your commitment to this innovative project. We are honored to work with you and have a positive impact on the lives of thousands of children living in around Westminster.
As the council is coming back, I really want to thank the foundation. The foundation was formed many years ago for the purpose of making sure we contributed to the city. But this playground and park that's being built is not something that's just for the city. Our partners include Urban Drainage, CDOT, RTD, Adams County, GoCo, and the city as well. But we've also had private industry from developers and builders that have donated money to the park area. So one of the things I want to make sure that people understand, this is a regional park. It touches several boundaries around the metro area from Denver, Federal Heights, Arbada, and Westminster. And the first and foremost is, we are going to have visitors that come from outside our area. With the beeline stopping at this park, this is open to people coming out of Denver to want to get out of the city and go to a playground that they can be safe for kids. Regardless of where you come from, this is a park that's going to be for everyone. We're very fortunate to have groups like the Legacy Foundation helping to bring this vision forward. We have several years of fundraising and construction left to go. But again, this will be one of the largest parks outside of Confluence Park in the Denver region. And it is strictly here for the public and for the people to enjoy. We believe this is going to be an amenity in the southern part of the city that will be unmatched anywhere else in the metro area. So we greatly appreciate what the Legacy Foundation has done, our partners that we already have done, and will continue to look for fundraising opportunities. But again, thank you all for coming tonight. Next item is still a continuation of those who have asked sign up to speak. Charlie Woolley.
I'm the owner of the St. Charles Town Company, and we're real estate developers, and we're trying to...
May I ask you to pause just a minute?
Sure.
If I can make sure that everyone understands. During citizen communication, you have a period of up to five minutes. Within that time, you're allowed to speak on any subject that's not scheduled for a public hearing. We have none scheduled tonight, so all subjects are there. The light will turn green the minute you start. If you have signed up, you don't need to give your address, but just identify who's on here so that people that listen to it later will know who's speaking. One minute left. Your yellow light comes on when your time is up, the red light comes on. Remember, this is a one-way conversation. You are talking to us. We're not carrying questions back and forth. So, Mr. Woolley, I apologize for the interruption. Shall we start over, please?
Sure. Again, I'm Charlie Woolley. I'm the owner of St. Charles Town Company, real estate developers, working on a project at 97th and Federal, and I wanted you all to see my face and that I'm a real person and that we're very committed to getting this project done in your city. We've completed nearly $400 million of real estate projects in Denver area, and all of them have what we think is a social dividend as well as a financial one. We've completed about $60 million in low-income housing tax credit projects in the last three years, and we are very committed to continuing to try to have a project like the one we propose in Westminster in our deal pipeline at all times. We have very loyal partners that are ready to do our project in Westminster, City Bank, City Real Estate Advisors, and Mercy Housing Loan Fund, and they're standing by just as soon as we can get a green light, like this one here, to get going forward. So we have had great partners on our projects. We partnered with the City of Denver, with Lakewood, with Metro West Housing Partners, the Volunteers of America, Ma'ha Yaradwe, Jefferson County, and I wanted you to know that we're adept and well-respected civic partners in our real estate development projects that are really challenging, and I think we have one in Westminster that is really challenging, and we're good at finding solutions, so I wanted you to know that. We're looking for a dialogue, as much as anything, to keep our project online, and we're hopeful that after our open letter of a month ago, that we're making progress towards getting that dialogue opened, and I just wanted to say hello to you all and open up that dialogue. Thank you very much.
I'm Dr. Herman George Jr., professor emeritus, African Studies, UNC. I have a question about what was indicated to me in the newsletter that goes out to city residents that announced that water rates are going up. And I left my email on the signup sheet because I'd like somebody to send me information about this. Unfortunately, as is often true, not until your own ox is gored do you kind of get interested in what's going on in some nether regions at times, and I confess, I've driven by this building many times without coming into this specific hall. So the question I have for the council is, is the water, is the city water in Westminster being privatized? Is any section of it being privatized? Do the policy changes that are taking place regarding water and the increasing rates have anything to do with for-profit companies being able to turn a profit off of the water that the citizens in this city have to rely upon? I'd appreciate not having to wade through years of archives to find out how we got to this point, because as I understand it, in 1994, before I moved here, some policy position paper or motion was made to begin this process. I didn't move here until five years later. And I confess, I haven't done as much homework as I would have liked to have before addressing you tonight. In fact, mistakenly, I thought the signup sheet was just for people who were attending. I didn't think it meant that you had to speak, so... But in point of fact, if I could get that information, I'd be eternally grateful, saving me the trouble of having to dig through 20 years of whatever the archives are, just specific to water policy and specific to that question. Is the water of the city of Westminster being privatized in any way, shape, or form? I know that there was a policy change with regard to trash pickup, and I think that had something to do with a private company. I appreciate that cities do need to contract out at times for services, but the market isn't always the best option. Entrepreneurs always don't have the answer that's the cheapest, most reliable, and particularly because the business model and the citizen model aren't the same thing. So in point of fact, I came with that question tonight, hoping that I'll get an answer at some point, hopefully electronically through my email, and I thank you very much for your time.
Stacy Balcom.
Hello. As promised, the last time I was here, my name is Stacy Balcom. You can reach me at ace.5280pt@gmail.com. I have my business card here this time. So I'm still working on leasing the Tibo property at 8700 Turnpike Drive in Westminster, Colorado. I've been working day and night since the last time I was here on finishing a business plan. I still haven't gotten as far as being able to attach everything that I would like to to this. This is just a preliminary draft, but it's getting there. I've been working on it night and day. You can probably tell by my eyes. So anyway, I will be back. When is your next meeting?
Next Monday.
Next Monday? Okay. I'll finish it by next Monday, before the holidays. That's all I have to say. And who do I turn this into?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm Steve Koch. This is Linda Dran. I live in Westminster. She lives a couple miles north of me with my 20-year-old daughter, and tonight, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Westminster Police Department for doing an incredible job in a situation that started out as being very frightening and dangerous for Linda and for my 20-year-old daughter. I'm not going to bore you with all the details here. All I want to do is tell you that the police department responded in amazing fashion when a strange man broke into Linda's home and attacked my daughter, and this has a happy ending in many ways. Number one, everybody's fine. Number two, thanks to the Westminster Police Department, this strange man is now behind bars. We're hoping he's going to stay that way. But just to give you some idea of what the police department did, they responded so quickly...
It was within 60 seconds of making the call.
Called 911. They were there within 60 seconds, and they apprehended this guy before he could get into his car. It's incredible, and the community really owes the police department a debt of gratitude for taking this guy off the streets. He can't harm anybody else now, and of course, we're incredibly thankful, and that's all we want to do is thank the police department. You hear things like, "Well, that only happens on TV." This is, this is better than what you see on TV. So thank you. Linda, do you want to say anything?
No. Just, I'll just repeat what Steve said. They responded very quickly. They were very efficient. Caught the guy. If they were 30 seconds later, he would have been gone. And then Detective Morgado has spent an enormous amount of time building a case to keep this man behind bars and keep the heat on the case so that he's brought to justice. So, thank you.
Thanks.
For the record, is there anyone in the room who did not sign up that would still like to come forward at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Report of city officials. Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have a brief comment. We've had a number of people speak this evening. I appreciate everybody coming out, sharing your stories, and also the questions you have, and I just wanted to let you know that even though our public comment is one-way and we hear information from you, we've got staff members in the audience who are taking information down, and will either be talking to you before you leave this evening, or we'll be back in contact with you. Again, thanks for being here this evening, and I think we have one or two representatives of the Legacy Foundation left here. I want to provide an additional thank you to the Legacy Foundation for what you're doing, and I also want to recognize the staff that are in the room that worked really hard to get that TOD built and the park built, and it's a wonderful success, and we're very, very proud of it. So thank you for recognizing that with your generous contribution.
Any comments from the council? Ms. Byrd?
So I just, further to Mr. Koch's comments, wanted to recognize our staff. Our police are incredible. We, we every day get to see the work that they do, and I know I'm personally grateful for the work that they do, so thank you also, and it's wonderful to hear that from citizens to come and recognize. Too often, you only hear when people are upset, and it's so nice to get that feedback when people have actually received your service and are appreciative of it. I also wanted to call your attention to another rock star member of Westminster city staff. One of our staff members was recently recognized by the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, Jenny Grafton just received the Rock Star of the Rockies Award, as a matter of fact. The award celebrates and recognizes emerging leaders in our community who are shaping and will continue to shape the future of the Metro North region. Her significant work in leading our city's affordable and workforce housing policy and programs, as well as other contributions, earned her this nomination and award. This is just a testament to her incredible work over, through the whole time that I know I have been on council. Great work to advance finding thoughtful ways for our city to be proactive and intentional in terms of building and making opportunities for put and afford, putting an affordable roof over their head. So she is another person, and along with her team and all the rest of the city who make these great programs possible. So that was all I wanted to say tonight. Thanks.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to echo what Council Byrd said. That was, that was an amazing shout-out. I really appreciate you sharing that with all of us, and congratulations, Jenny. And thank you to everyone who stepped up to the podium and shared with us your stories tonight. I really appreciate hearing from the public your concerns, and, but I like to hear the good things, too, because that, that means a lot. We have a lot of great things that happen in our city, and it's just so important to remember that and to share those stories and celebrate them, so thank you very much. This was a really busy week for the council. You probably saw, saw us all over the social media, because as you can tell by our lights outside, this is holiday season, and so we are everywhere in this city celebrating, and I hope all of you are getting to celebrate as well. I'd like to give a big shout-out to the town hall that was held at the Covenant Village last week. It was a really good town hall, lots of great questions, very interesting comments, and just, it was very well done, and I appreciated everybody who turned out for that. And I had the opportunity on Thursday night to go to the Open Space Murial event and see the new murals for some of our new tunnels that we'll be seeing around town, and oh my goodness, we have local, really wonderful local artists right here in our very own town, and they should be celebrated. They're just magnificent, and I encourage you all. I know it's pretty warm out there right now, unfortunately. We need a little snow, but it's not snowing, so I would encourage you all to take a walk through our fine, open space and take a look at some of those murals, because they are just magnificent. And then I had the opportunity to attend the citywide holiday party on the plaza put on by the Westminster PD, and that was an exciting event, and I enjoyed sharing time with all of the people who attended that. And also, I had the opportunity to go to the Westminster Grandma menorah lighting at the Orchard Center last night, actually, and this was my first time ever attending a menorah lighting, and it was, it was such an inspiring event. So Sarah, Sarah Ridgway, was the one who got to light the, the first candle, and as many of you know, she is the mother of Jessica Ridgway, who sadly, tragically, was killed in our city here, and it touched all of us, so it was very, very powerful to see her light that light. And Rabbi Benji talked about how they light the menorah, the Jewish religion lights the menorah as a way to create lightness in the dark, and I just, I really found that beautiful, that I had never really thought of it that way, and it was truly inspiring. And then finally, thank you. Thank you so much to the Westminster Legacy Foundation. What a treat tonight. I'm truly blown away. $200,000, that's a huge check, and I'm a big proponent of open space parks and rec, and I'm just so, so very grateful, so thank you.
Come on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other event that Councilor Scully didn't mention was the Hometown Christmas, where they celebrated the 100-year-old tree, and so Councilor Scully and I have some, some of their garb from the Westminster Historical Society that they're raising money so they can help preserve our history. So hopefully, you can go purchase some of these great gifts they have at the History Museum down off of 72nd and Lowell. The next thing I would like to do is invite everybody to a town hall that I hold once a month. I like to call it Policy and Pilsner, or whatever ails ya. We'll be at the Cocopelli Beer Company off of 88th and Harlan this Wednesday at 6:00, and we typically hang out from 6:00 until people leave and just hang out and talk about Westminster, or whatever else you'd like to talk to me about. Next, as you may know, we have three spots coming open with, in council in the coming month, with Councilor Pinter and Byrd being elected to higher office, and Mayor Protem DeCamber resigning to become the Director of Communications for Governor-elect Polis. And again, I congratulate each of you on, on those shifts. By charter, if there were three spots vacated at once, we would need to go to a special election. My colleagues have not all yet resigned. This is allowing council to go through an appointment process to replace Mayor Protem DeCamber in the next few weeks. Legally, this is allowed. However, I feel we are sidestepping the intent of the charter. I feel having three appointed members of this council appointed by the body is not in the best interest of the city of Westminster. I believe we have an opportunity to let the people know their voice is the most important thing to this council. I call upon my fellow council members who are leaving respectfully to resign in this council to call for a special election. I do not believe that allowing this council the opportunity to place their choices over making up 40, over 40% of the council is not in the people's interest. I know there is a good-sized price tag for a special election, but allowing the voice of the people to pick their representation is worth the cost and will be money well-spent. These positions belong to the people, and I believe hiding behind legalese to let this council appoint three members to the council in a month and a half is wrong and outside the charter's intent. I read a quote from a book called Embers by Sandro Maria, and the quote was, "And yet, sometimes facts are no more than pitiful consequences, because guilt does not reside in our acts, but in the intentions that give rise to our act. Everything turns on your intentions." Tonight, let's show the people that our intention to allow their voices and interests be properly represented by their will in an election, choosing their replacements of the three council members who were elected by them in an election. Thank you.
Ms. Seitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to talk about something that's a little different right now. I also want to say thank you to one of our community partners and members, and I had meant to do this last week and forgot, but the Westminster Chamber of Commerce was honored with the Champion in Industry Award by the Colorado Business Roundtable. And so this is a very... And so, this is a very prestigious award. It's given on a statewide level to recognize organizations that give back, have a positive impact in their community. And the Westminster Chamber of Commerce beat out several other organizations to be recognized with this. So, I just wanted to say thank you to them. I think this exemplifies how they give back to the community. They have stepped up consistently when we have provided an initiative. The Start by Believing initiative is a great example of that. So, I just did want to recognize them and their amazing CEO, Juliette Abdal, for all of their work. I also wanted to bring up, do you mind if I hold up your hat? I'm gonna use her prop real quick. The Hometown 100 Year Christmas. So, the Christmas tree is 100 years old. It's actually 95 years old of the tradition. It was a transplanted tree. But it was really an amazingly fun event, very, that's what's so great about Westminster is you have different pockets within the community. And it felt like we were in a small village, almost. It was such a wonderful event. But a very savvy fundraiser, I think I would have had frostbite on my ears if they had not been selling these. So, definitely very happy to contribute to that fundraiser. And then finally, I also wanted to say thank you to the Legacy Foundation. If those of you sitting in the audience haven't heard of the Legacy Foundation, it is a great nonprofit that helps fundraise to meet the gap on really neat initiatives that the city can't fund through our general fund. It's a way residents can give a little bit of extra so that we can see things like the Nature Park be built or the Jessica Ridgway Memorial Park. So, the Legacy Foundation fills that gap. And it's a great organization if you're looking for a nonprofit to donate to. And with that, thank you all for coming out. It is fun when we have a lot of community members in the audience. So, thank you for attending tonight.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Cox and Ms. Dran, the guy who leads the group you're talking about tonight, sitting right over there. So, if you want to stop by and talk to him before you leave, please do. All right, any other comments from council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. It's the Consent Agenda. This is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This has been reviewed by the council at this time. No request to have an item removed. Consent Agenda has been approved. So, at this time, I will accept the motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda items A through E.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor with Consent Agenda? Please do that with your lights, please. And motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is the appointments and resignations for city boards and commissions. At this point, if I can get it back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 33, reappointing members and adopting new members and alternate members to the Environmental Advisory Board, Historic Landmark Board, Human Services Board, Inclusivity Board, Parks, Recreation, Libraries, and Open Space Advisory Board, Personnel Board, Planning Commission, and Special Permits and Licensing Board respectfully.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I just wanted to briefly comment and thank the many people who stepped up and applied. We had so many amazing applications. We really have remarkable constituents here in Westminster. And thank everyone who serves on a board or a committee. Those are sometimes long hours, and they do incredible work, from charity work to policy work all across our city, benefiting our residents and benefiting how we adopt and influencing our policy. So, thank you to everyone who stepped up, and thank you to everyone who serves. This really is quite, quite a dedication of service to serve without compensation on our boards.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to echo what Counselor Pinter said. Our boards and commissions are some of our most, it's where most of our great ideas come from. And so, I think everybody who serves on those boards, thank you for your time, your commitment. And if you do not, if you are not selected to serve on a board, I would encourage you to attend a board meeting. They're all public. You're welcome to just go and sit and be a part of the meeting. And I did that often before I was on city council. It's a great experience, and it familiarizes you with the different boards and commissions.
I wanted to thank every person who came out and interviewed for a position on one of our city's boards and commissions. Owning your city and providing service, giving of your time, getting involved in all of the variety of ways that are open to you as a participant or a member on one of our boards and commissions is critical. Great towns, great cities don't happen by accident. They happen when caring, committed citizens get involved, roll up their sleeves, and get to work to make good things happen. So, that can't happen just with a great city staff and with committed council members. We need citizens to expand the scope and the reach of the work that we do to really get in there and be thoughtful, be the eyes and ears in the community, and report back to council. So, it's incredible work. Again, if you don't get a position on one of the boards and commissions, I urge you to continue trying. We had such a great pool of applicants. Sadly, each year that we go through this, there are only a limited number of openings. And it's so hard to find a good spot for every qualified person. We have an abundance of incredible people in our city. So, please, if you're someone who doesn't get an appointment, do not lose hope. Stay involved, stay engaged. There is gonna be an opportunity for you to find your place contributing to this great city.
Ms. Sights?
And I know it feels like the last thing we need to do is pile on. But I think I can't help myself, because I want to say we have consistently seen more and more people apply for these positions. And I, as a council member, see that as us being successful in our goal to be an engaged and inclusive community. We've seen quite an increase. So, for those of you that were selected, congratulations. Thank you for giving back to the community. For those of you who weren't, remember, these are all open to the public. And so, you don't have to be selected on a board to still participate. And we've had that in the past, where people maybe didn't get the appointment, but then still went to the meetings and get to learn about what's going on and still contribute. And then there are so many different volunteer opportunities within the city. So, thank you for your desire to serve. I will tell you this, based off of the pool of applicants that we had for boards and commissions, I hope we have, see a similar pool with the council appointment process, because we have some really stunning people, some really talented people that live in this, this community.
Other comments? This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sights?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Congratulations to all of our appointees. And thank you again for all of those who have served previously that have left our service for the time being. We hope to welcome you back again in the future. Next item up is Item 10A, Resolution Number 34. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 34, establishing the City of Westminster 2019 Legislative Policy Statement and Lobbying Protocols.
Do you have a second, Mr. Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number 34? Hearing none, this, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Demont, do you have one?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, in front of the public here, thank the staff for adding mental health to our policy, as well as the rest of the council on agreeing on adding that. I think that's a really important thing that we're seeing in society that really needs to be addressed. And unfortunately, nationwide, I think we're doing a poor job. So, I'm glad to see Westminster take a step forward in trying to help that issue.
Pinter?
Yeah, I just want to clarify for anyone who is curious about this. I know we have a lot of people here in the audience. If you have any concerns about what we do and lobby about, this is the sort of thing that's in our packet, that's available on the city's website. But this is generally to protect the city's interests, to protect home rule interests, and protect those issues that are of great importance. The city very sparingly involves itself in matters at the State House. But if you're curious, it's in our agenda packet.
Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Byrd?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sights?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes. Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next item up is Resolution Number 35. Ms. Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 35, authorizing the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement with Westminster Hotels LLC for Lot 5B Westminster Promenade East, third replat in substantially the same form as the agreement presented to council.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Okay, hearing none, this is also a roll call vote. All right, Ms. Parker, if you will.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sights?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next item up is Resolution Number 36. Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 36, authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as attached, that provides for the repayment to the City of Westminster for funds advanced by the City of Westminster for the Holly Park Town Home Urban Renewal Project.
I have a motion. Is there a second, Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is also a roll call vote, please.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sights?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next item up is a move to authorize reduction of interfund loans. This is Item D1. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the reduction of the interfund loan from the General Fund to the Westminster Economic Development Authority in the amount of $120,000.
Mr. Demont, do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, this is a vote with your lights, please. Motion is carried on a 6-0 vote. Ms. Scully, will you take the second part, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the reduction of the interfund loan from the General Capital Improvement Fund to the Westminster Economic Development Authority in the amount of $445,000.
I have a motion, Mr. Demont, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from council on Item D2? Seeing none, this is also a vote with your lights, please. This motion also carries on a 6-0 vote. All right, next item up is Council's Bill Number 52. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 52 on the first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of fiscal year 2017 carryover funds to the 28 budget of the General and General Capital Improvement Funds in the amount of $565,000.
Second.
Sorry, Ms. Pinter. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you will, please.
Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demont?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sights?
Yes.
Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next item up will be the Council's Bill Number 53. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 53 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute and implement an economic development agreement with West Call Center LLC.
Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments? Byrd, did you have one?
Just very quickly. Just for the audience and for anyone listening, while I really appreciate the amount of effort and work both our staff and a lovely investor in our community did to try to get this deal to be something that I was comfortable with, I ultimately was not. And so, just couldn't get there. So, I will be voting no tonight.
Any other comments or questions, my council? This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Sights? No. Scully?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demont?
No.
Pinter?
Yes.
Motion carries on a 4-2 vote. Next item is Peacock Studios. This is Item F1. Ms. Byrd?
I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to find that the public interest will be best served by a negotiated contract with Peacock Studios, Inc. Award the contract to Peacock Studios, Inc. for the fabrication and installation of the Coast Guard statue and authorize the city manager to execute the contract in an amount of $102,000 plus an additional $10,200 for contingency, for a total authorized expenditure of $112,200.
Excuse me, Ms. Pinter?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions by council?
Yes, this is just a really neat opportunity to add to our Armed Forces Tribute Garden. Just so that y'all are aware, this is going to be a statue for the Coast Guard, recognizing the Coast Guard, for Sarah Faulkner, the first female rescue swimmer from the Coast Guard. We also have statues from the Merchant Marine and the Army and the Air Force and all of, yeah, all of our other, the Navy and all of our other branches. And if you haven't had an opportunity to tour, it really is a spectacular tribute garden. And we have ceremonies there every year. And I know the public use it as well. And you have the opportunity to purchase commemorative bricks and add something to honor those members of your family who have served. And so, if you want to take a look, there's a description in the agenda packet, or you can just walk over. It's just behind City Park Rec in that open space area between City Park Rec and the Weston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share Counselor Pinter's enthusiasm for this project. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Mr. Bill Wallensack, who is here in the crowd. This was actually, he was, I think, the driving force behind this tribute garden. And this tribute garden is now a source of pride and reflection. So, not just for our residents, people come to this tribute garden every year for our ceremony. People come to this tribute garden every year for our ceremony. So I do want to say thank you. Many people in this audience have members of their families, bricks with their names on it, or their names on it. And I know my family is intending to add my father's, so thank you so much.
Other comments or questions by council? Just a quick follow-up. This is one of the few tribute gardens in the United States totaling that has all six branches of service because of the Merchant Marines. And we are one of the few around that recognize them and the efforts they did for World War II. Right now, we are almost funded for all of our statues. We're still working on a couple of last-minute details, but we have at least right now four out of the six that are funded. We have groups working on the other two, and we hope to wrap those up sometime in the first part of next year. Within about two years, if everything goes well, we'll be able to hold a major event at the garden unveiling all six of the new statues to complete the garden. So as you've heard from some of the council members, the opportunity to donate can be done through the Legacy Foundation. That is part of the group that's helping to raise the funds, and that is also a nonprofit where if your company wants to donate, it's a way for them to do it through a nonprofit, and that money can be earmarked directly to the tribute garden. So if you have an opportunity or a desire to try to help out finalize this, please look to the Legacy Foundation if you're local, but we will take money from anybody. Any color of money works for us. So thank you all for the, what you've done at this point. We have a button, if you will, for item F1. And the motion carries on a six oh vote. Ms. Bird, would you take F2, please?
I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to find that the public interest will be best served by a negotiated contract with Robert L. Henderson. Award the contract to Robert L. Henderson for the fabrication and installation of the Merchant Marine statue, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract in an amount of $100,000 plus an additional $10,000 for contingency, for a total authorized expenditure of $110,000.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by the council? Hearing none, this is also a vote with your lights, please. And this motion also carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is item G. This is the authorization of a contract with Duran Construction. Ms. Sights?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a sole-source contract with Duran Construction West LLC for public infrastructure surrounding block B1C1 in downtown Westminster in the amount of $634,605, and authorize a contingency in the amount of $63,461 for a total authorized expenditure of $698,066.
I have a motion. Is there a second, Ms. Bird?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is a open for comments from the council. Hearing none, this is a vote with your lights, please. And the motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is item 10H. Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an amended sole-source contract with Special Forces F9 LLC to furnish business development services for consulting related to business expansion and strategic planning for city economic development activities in an amount not to exceed $175,000 in 2018 and 2019, including expenses incurred to date.
Ms. Bird?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by members of the council? Hearing none, this is a vote with your lights, please. And the motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is item I1. Ms. Sights?
Thank you. I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest would be best served by ratifying sole-source purchases from Physio Control, Inc. in 2018 in the amount of $63,137, and authorize a contingency in 2018 in the amount of $11,863, for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $75,000 in 2018.
Second.
Ms. Bird? I have a motion and a second on item I1. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, this is a vote with your buttons, please. And the motion carries on a six oh vote. Sights, if you continue.
I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, determine that the public interest would be best served by authorizing sole-source purchases with Physio Control, Inc. in amount, in an amount not to exceed $75,000 in 2019.
Ms. Bird?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item I2. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, this will be a vote with your lights, please. And this motion also carries on a six oh vote. All right, the item 11, there is no old business and passions aboard us tonight. And the next item on the agenda is the election of a new mayor pro temp. Ms. Parker, you have ballots, please. Council, if you would, please mark your ballots and then return those to the city clerk. All right, at this point, we have a tie between two members of council, council member Sights and council member Scully. Based on that tie, I will ask the council to again vote, and that will be the only two that we will vote for. So please vote for one of those two.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. On successive votes, you can continue to vote for anyone on the ballot. We just have to get to a majority. And we have a majority. Four votes for Counselor Sights and two votes for Counselor Scully.
Congratulations, Ms. Sights. Your Honor, I think you're here for a reason.
Family, would you please come with me? I'm bringing you along. That's great. My husband Matthew, my daughter Phoebe, my son Ian, my daughter Phoebe, and then other daughters. I am here, Sights. I am here, Sights. Your government and its people will tell me where that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the United States and Colorado, and of the state of Colorado, and the ordinances and the ordinances and the city charter and city trial of the City of Westminster, of the City of Westminster, and faithfully, one, and faithfully, for one, the duties of the United States, of the United States, of the United States, and of Colorado. And of the state of Colorado, and the ordinances and the ordinances and the city charter and city trial of the City of Westminster, of the City of Westminster, and faithfully, one, and faithfully, for one, the duties of the United States, of the United States, of the United States, and of Colorado.
All right, we have one other piece of business under item 12A. Mr. Demont had requested time for an item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move that we direct the staff to prepare and agendize a proposed resolution for council to consideration on December 17th, which would call for a special election.
Is there a second to the motion? Hearing no second to the motion, the motion dies. Any other business before council at this time? Hearing none, then the council meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene at this point as the Westminster Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2018 meeting as presented.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All members of the board who are approving, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda for the Wida is item 3A. This is resolution number 193. Ms. Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 193, authorizing the executive director to execute the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented, that provides for the repayment to the City of Westminster for funds advanced by the City of Westminster for the Holly Park Town Home Urban Renewal Project.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a member of the board that has any comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Parker, it's a roll call vote.
Atchison.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Demont.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sights.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is resolution number 194. Ms. Bird?
I move to adopt resolution number 194, authorizing the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to amend the contract to sell real estate to execute the repurchase option and post-closing agreement and reduce the sale price from $250,000 to $1 in order to donate the property commonly known as Holly Park, which is located at the northwest corner of West 96th Avenue and Federal Boulevard, to the Urban Land Conservancy in substantially the same form as the presented agreements.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by the board? Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a point for the public to understand this item. So Holly Park, which is, that property was originally being developed and was kind of abandoned and put into a position where it wasn't being taken care of and became a public health concern, and that's how the city acquired that property. So to have somebody take over that property and actually do something with it that is meaningful to the community, I think, is, is a good thing. And so it, the mayor is probably the only one who has the best history of this, but I think that it's worth the public understanding why we would give property away like that. I mean, it's something that I questioned when I first saw it, and I think this is really actually a good thing for the city, and I'm, I'm glad to see this on here.
Ms. Sights?
Well, I think Counselor Demont stole my thunder. That was pretty much, I wanted to give some historical context. The city owns this purchase out of, out of due diligence for public safety. And now, because of owning this, we're able to further a different public policy goal, which is to have affordable housing throughout our city. And so I am absolutely delighted that our economic development team and our city management were able to find the right fit and have us go forward. So we are, we are delighted.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Bird.
Yes.
Demont.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sights.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. With that, the board is finished, and we are done for the night. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Congratulations.